Hello, everybody. Good evening. Welcome to the March 22 regular meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Marietta. We will now call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Madam Secretary, would you please call roll for determination of quorum?
Was that for me? I couldn't hear you. Here.
Commissioner Wojcik.
Here.
Commissioner Harland.
Here.
Vice Chair Fisher.
Here.
Chair La Paglia.
Here.
Let the record reflect, all members are present.
Thank you. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Wojcik.
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Madam Secretary, are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
Seeing none.
Thank you, and I'd like to call for a motion in a second to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll call for a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
Make a motion in a second.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Rumman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wojcik.
Aye.
Commissioner Harland.
Aye.
Vice Chair Fisher.
Aye.
Chair La Paglia.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. At this time, we will take public comments. Any person may address the Planning Commission on any subject pertaining to city business which does not relate to any item listed on tonight's agenda. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the Planning Commission on any matter not listed on the agenda, and speakers will be limited to three minutes. Madam Secretary, do we have any non-agenda public comment tonight?
Seeing none.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the public hearing. The public hearing item tonight is the substantial conformance 2023-00001 for the convenience store gas station on Clinton Keith Road. Are there any members of the Planning Commission that wish to abstain or recuse themselves from tonight's item? I don't believe so. Take not aheads, no. So with that, we'll move on to staff's presentation. Staff, may we have the staff report?
Thank you, Chairman. La Paglia, Vice Chair Fisher, and members of the Planning Commission, good evening. So, just like you mentioned, we are here to talk about a substantial conformance. And what that is, it's a substantial conformance is a minor change to a project that was already approved. So I'm going to walk us through the history, and then we'll move on to the project that we're looking at, and some exhibits, and close with the recommendation. So we did have three previous meetings before the project was ultimately approved in December. The first meeting was in October, October 12th. At that meeting, there was a request to ask for a continuance to the hearing, and the Planning Commission considered it and granted it. We returned on October 26th with the project again, and we presented it to the Planning Commission. At that time, the Planning Commission took action on the project and gave a recommendation on what they would like to do, and provided staff direction to return with findings to reflect that decision. So on December 14th, staff did return with the findings that the Planning Commission made, and that was to approve the convenience store and the fuel station, to deny the car wash, to deny the propane tank, and to deny the request to sell alcohol. And so the action was taken December 14th on that approval. Following that approval, in January, we did receive two appeals to the decision that was made in December. As a result of that, the applicant reconsidered the design that they had approved and presented an alternative solution. Because they were willing to redesign their project and reduce the intensity of it overall from what they had originally requested, the appeals were withdrawn, and the applicant requested to return to the Planning Commission to review these changes from what was approved So now we're going to talk about the actual minor changes that are before you today. So what they would like to do is construct a convenience store in a revised location, add electrical vehicle charging stations to expand the hours that were previously approved to allow for a 24-hour operation for retail sales and services. The applicant would also like to apply and process a new type 20 ABC license application. This would be a separate application, not decided on tonight. It would go through its own review process, but we are asking the Planning Commission to consider that request and ask staff to review a new application at a later date. So let's just, again, look at the land use and the general plan for the area before we look at the redesign proposal. So here we have the configuration of this site laid out, and we know that the general plan designation that the city envisioned for this property is commercial. The specific zoning for the site is regional commercial, and we can see from the colored map that there are a variety of zones surrounding the site. So to the north, we have Clinton Keith Road with regional commercial just beyond. To the west, we have Clinton Keith Road again with neighborhood commercial just beyond. To the east, we have community commercial with a CVS store. And then directly to the south, we have single-family one. This is a Marietta Oaks specific plan, and these are existing single-family homes. So now we're looking at the revised plotting from what they had approved. So as I briefly mentioned in the slide earlier, they moved the location of the convenience The revised location provides a greater buffer between the fuel station and the residence. The fuel canopy that they have here has now moved. It was closer to the residential property on the approved development plan that exists today. They are asking to push it further to the street, as well as these underground fuel tanks. Those were also previously placed generally in this location, and so the revised proposal with this layout, the convenience store, and pushing the development closer to the street, they were able to increase the setback that they had originally approved to a greater distance. So roughly, generally, the fuel canopy used to be at 45 feet, and now we see that it is 84 feet. The fuel tanks used to be at 50 feet, and now they are at 88 feet. Here is the location of the EV charging, and they have decided to place it here. This is the location where the Planning Commission denied the car wash. So instead, they are asking to use this area for EV charging. So now we're looking at a comparison plan of the existing approval versus the revised plotting that we are reviewing today. So the purple shows the existing approval and the placement of the plotting for the store, the canopy, the gas tanks, the car wash, and the propane sales. So we can see, even though it's a little bit busy, we can see how the original design had its own placement for its own reasons. And as the applicant decided to cut back on their proposal, that allowed for a greater area and a different vision to help achieve some of the concerns that were expressed in the prior three hearings that we had. Now, there were a number of concerns that were expressed, but in particular, there was concern about proximity. And proximity was a topic that was covered for a variety of concerns that relate to proximity. So by moving everything further to the street, we have increased the buffer from the residences and made a project design that much more appropriate. So just real quickly, this is the new location of the store. This is where the convenience store used to be. This is where the canopy is approved right now, along with the fuel tanks. And as I said, the canopy is about 45 feet, and then the tanks are roughly 50 feet away. But we can see with this redesign how they have moved the fuel station further towards the street, as well as these tanks, increasing the setback and providing an even greater buffer between the residential homes and the commercial site. You know, while the Planning Commission did deny the car wash and they did deny the propane sales, the applicant decided to accept the decision and did not pursue a car wash or the propane sales. They felt like this revised proposal was appropriate for the size of the site as we see it today. So, you know, just to reemphasize, the applicant's requesting to change the hours of operation to 24 hours and to replace the approved site design layout with the updated version. The applicant also requests the ability to file a new application for a type 20 ABC license. This can be processed separately at a later date and added as a condition of approval for the substantial conformance. So in conclusion, it is staff's recommendation to adopt the notice of exemption pursuant to SEWA and to adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Marietta to approve substantial conformance 2023-00001. A proposal to modify the convenience, the 5,800-square-foot convenience store and a fuel station based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A. And that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Lot of changes. We're coming to the Planning Commission for questions to staff. Commissioner Wojcik, any questions for Mr. Renomaki?
Yes, thank you. First, I'd just like to commend the efforts to soften the impact of this project. I wasn't on the Planning Commission when this was approved prior, but I did watch the videos, so I'm pretty familiar with the project. My understanding, though, the footprint of the convenience store is going to expand from the prior approved footprint, correct?
Correct.
And what's the difference with the square footage?
The previous square footage was approximately 3,700 square feet, and so they're increasing it to this size now.
I noticed in the map, even though the pumps are further away from the homes, it looked like the distance between the pumps and the street, and I assume it's the curb of the street, is 41 feet and 6 inches. Is that accurate where that distance is, or is that a different measurement?
That's correct. So, I don't...
You want to bring up the overlay?
There it is. Okay. So here, this solid dotted black line, the thicker one right there, that's the property line, and so that's a correct distance from the property line, edge of property line to the edge of the fuel canopy being 41 feet 6 inches.
Is there a minimum distance between the property line and where a pump can be located?
Well, we would consider the fuel canopy to be a structure, so there would be a front building setback. And if we were to apply the front building setback, it would have to be 20... because this is regional commercial, it would have to be 25 feet from the front of the property line.
Were there any discussions to, I guess, move that canopy closer towards Clinton Keith? And what was the result if you did have those discussions?
Yes. So that was a question that we asked, but that was also a question that the applicant had already explored, and so they were able to explain to us pretty easily, and we can see here. So this is our main access point where all vehicles will be entering the site regardless of the direction they're coming from. They'll always access from here. But here we see, this is where, this is our little truck turning template that we have. This is why it has little outlines on it. But this little hammerhead here is designed to give the truck room to maneuver onto the site, turn around, and then leave the site. So if the fuel canopy were to be placed closer to the street, the designer had said that this hammerhead turnaround would be impacted and that the fuel truck wouldn't be able to safely maneuver on-site with the canopy closer to the street. There wouldn't be enough room for the truck to maneuver.
Would the fuel truck be able to exit the property, though, I guess, further west on Clinton Keith? I mean, do they have to exit back out?
If they chose to do that, they could, yes. This is just a controlled light, so I would assume that the fuel truck would always enter and exit at a controlled intersection, but, you know, I'm sure that they have an option.
So I understand that the issue before us tonight is not to decide whether or not a gas station can be there, because that's already been decided.
Yes, it's already been decided, and the project is approved.
Okay, so that's not even on the table for tonight?
Correct.
Then, I'm trying to reconcile, though, my third meeting, so forgive my ignorance. How is it that that's not on the table? That's fine. But then, the expansion of the hours is on the table tonight. But I'm trying to figure out in the development code how that becomes, how that comes before us tonight. Because when I look at substantial conformance, it doesn't seem like it would fit in there. So I don't know how that comes before us, but not the other part.
So earlier on in the presentation, I briefly covered substantial conformance, and I framed it as being a minor change to an approval. And so as we look at the development code, as you did, the substantial conformance has a, it starts off with a list of possible scenarios that could be interpreted as being a minor change. And so it tries to describe what a minor change is. And while hours of operation, changing the plotting of a location, like the trash enclosure, moving the building, is clearly stated in there as being a minor modification, but there are other examples that they list, and so it's supposed to follow a pattern of what might be a minor modification. And hours are something that is not typically reviewed in an application, although we do it in certain circumstances as we have. So hours, also, like moving a building or a trash enclosure, redesigning the site, that would fit into being a modification that could be considered for a substantial conformance.
And if I understand it, the prior approval of the hours of the convenience store, I can't remember if it was 10 o'clock at night or midnight?
The end time was 10:00 PM, correct.
And Commissioner, just to underscore Aaron's point, the commission normally doesn't set hours of operation in this project. They set those hours, and the applicant's asking if those could be adjusted.
Right. I'm just trying to reconcile substantial conformance, what defines minor?
Sure. If I could expand upon that. So when we look at a convenience store or fuel station, or if it's combined or separate, regardless, in the development code, hours of operation is not something that we would bring to the Planning Commission to decide or review. We don't have a standard that dictates what types of businesses can operate at what hours of the day. So when we look at the hours that we are this evening, we don't have a specific standard in the development code to state what the hours of operation should be. And so we have a stated approval that identifies the Planning Commission set some hours for the convenience store, but in terms of measuring what is minor or major in terms of hours of operation, we don't have in our development code any threshold to measure the change of being minor or major. Now, since the hours are limited to 10 o'clock right now, and they're asking for 24 hours, the applicant can further explain the reasons for that. However, the nature of the convenience store and fuel station leads to an operation that could typically have a need to be 24 hours due to the services and retail products that they offer. And the convenience store, we, in the United States, term that, it's a marketing term, convenience, but that is the reason for it. It's quick and easy versus stopping at your CVS to go in or the Target. So that's how we would look at whether or not the hours are major or minor. And in this case, we would consider the change to 24 hours to be a minor modification from what was stated in the original approval.
Okay. The, I can answer that question, by the way. Why they want to go 24 hours? It's more money. It's a pretty simple question.
And Commissioner, our development code does set that midnight is the end of any alcohol sales, so the 24 hours is not asking for alcohol sales past midnight. It's just open for business, if you will. So I just want to clarify that point.
Thank you. Okay, one final question, then. Kind of walk me through the ABC license. The prior commission denied it, and I'm not sure, based on our action tonight, are we saying that you're welcome to bring it back? Or can we make a decision to say that ship has sailed? I'm trying to figure out if we have both those options or what options available.
No, good question, Commissioner. So the Planning Commission denied the MCUP. So when that occurs, you have to file a new permit, right? Staff are not the decision-makers, meaning we can't reject a person's ability to apply for a permit. We have to take it in, analyze it, comment thereof. So this would be for the applicant to take that risk on their own accord, to submit and process an application for an MCUP. It'd be brand-new, but it's not resurrecting the previous one, because that's dead. You guys denied that project.
So my understanding, no matter what conclusion we reach tonight, they can bring that back at any time, as long as it's a new application. Is that safe to say?
There's no, there's no gap on refiling, but technically, and also, most applicants will file the MCP well after they get the project approved. When you get a development plan permit, you're given three years to satisfy those conditions. It can take two to three years to satisfy them. So they'll often come back at year two to file the MCUP. This was one where the applicant had it all as a bundle. We typically don't see the MUCP, MCUP at this point. It's typically a director's decision on its own accord. It's still appealable, but it's a director's decision.
Okay. Thank you for that. I have no further questions for staff.
Thank you. Commissioner Reiman, questions for staff?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I appreciate some of the changes. I, too, was not on the Planning Commission at either the October meetings or December meetings, so I didn't come onto the Planning Commission until January. But what I did do is review those meetings and read all the comments from, and saw the comments from the public. I've also gone out to the site and taken a look at it. I'm very familiar with it as well. So I appreciate, and I do like the overlay, by the way, map that showed what was previously approved versus what is being proposed right now. I think that's very helpful, so thank you for that. Just some points of clarification. Previous commission, in its entirety, cut off the time where it would close at 10:00 PM. What time would it open?
It was 5:00 AM.
Okay, so the convenience store would be open from 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
That is correct, as the approval stands today.
Okay. And with the, with the convenience store closed, are the pumps, are the gas pumps still open and available so people would therefore be able to use or get gas, basically, even if the convenience store was not open?
I believe the convenience store and the fuel station would be operating at the same time, so once 10:00 PM would be the closing time for both.
Commissioner, you'll find that it's very common for gas stations in the midnight, late hours that they have unmanned facilities or one person as a clerk, but you can just put your credit card in the pump and get gas, typically with most of these operations.
That's what I thought, so I just wanted to make that clarification. So somebody could get gas 24 hours a day, but the convenience store would be open from 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM, correct?
I'd like to confirm with the applicant, but that is our understanding that that is correct.
Okay. That's why I just wanted to clarify that point. Again, no alcohol sales. You mentioned about the type 20 that they could reapply. Now, would it come back to the commission for us to reevaluate it, or would it be at a director's hearing? Based upon, this is now the fourth meeting that we've had here, what would, what would that entail?
Okay, so if, going back to my earlier mention of a substantial conformance, what we have is an approval, so we have the development plan already approved, and we know that the Planning Commission denied the minor conditional use permit components, of which one of them was alcohol. So the decision stands purely as a development plan, and the decision on alcohol stands for the immediate moment.
Right.
When, and if an applicant decided that they would like to submit a new application for that, we would follow the procedures that are outlined in the development code for that. And so for all alcohol users in the city, all of them are conditional use permits. They have different labels, but they're all conditional use permits, and they have that reason for the city to be able to pull that use permit in the event that it becomes a concern or nuisance or a need for the city to revoke the permit. So the, the method for obtaining approval for beer and wine sales, which is all that's allowed in a convenience store in the city, is beer and wine sales only, and they're off-site. So that application type is processed through an administrative approval, but the administrative approval also has public noticing and public comment. So it functions as a, as a public hearing, much the same way we are this evening. So if they were to reapply, which they said they intended to, it would be a minor conditional use permit, and that as a standalone application would be processed... and that as a standalone application would be processed by the director. It would be an administrative approval.
And Commissioner Reiman, just to add to that, your commission weighed in on an M C U P that we issued a notice of intent of a director's decision. There was a neighbor that had concerns and asked that we present that to the planning commission, which we did. And that was just a couple of months ago in a neighborhood commercial zone. So we have that process in place with the noticing and the ability to elevate that should it be necessary.
So I'm just going to kind of what if this, if we, if they did file a new type 20 and it were to come back and be evaluated and the hours of operation obviously are in contention here just for the sake of the, of the convenience store. But if there were, at some point in time in the future, there were alcohol sales allowed there, and I'm not saying that there, that there are right now or even will be, but would it come back to the commission to make that decision in those, those hours of operation? Because we're getting into the weeds with the hours of operation with this, or at least the previous commission did. So would that be something that would come to the commission? Or would that be a staff decision at that point in time?
Currently, the applicant has hours from 5 A M. to 10 P M.
For the store, right?
And that's all the hours that from our perspective they could file with A B C. The planning commission extended those hours. They could go with that approval. But there cannot be an inconsistency with the application with A B C and us. They have to be coterminous with hours of operation. That's why I believe the applicant is asking for deference on that tonight. It's so that they can take the next step to follow the alcohol beverage control application process. Which they also do have their own hearing body and requirements as well. So it's dual purpose.
Right. Just a, just an observation when I looked at the, at the site and just at the elevation of where the gas station would sit and particularly that driveway that goes out to Clinton Keith on the west side right there. And my concern is there's, at Best County, drove by again today, there's probably about six homes that, that back up on Hackberry right up to the property. And if you notice that, that, that some of those homes, they're second stories. You can actually see over the top of the fence and look onto Clinton Keith right there. And so that drive aisle essentially would have cars right at the, kind of the top line of the fence that would just, you know, go out to the street there. So, you know, depending on the height of the vehicle, you know, whoever lives there would see cars basically right up against their back fence right there. Whereas the, the height of the, of the block wall as it backs up where the store is, sits at a higher elevation because there's a hill there. So the, conceivably, the, the store would be pretty much concealed from view from the homes that back up directly to the store, whereas the homes closer to the street. So I don't know if there's been any discussion between staff or the applicant or any residents' concerns, if there's an ability to kind of level off that. I wouldn't say adding to the walls, again, I'm not a construction background, but, but I've seen in different projects where they'll put a, a wall that kind of parallels an existing wall that might be a little bit higher in order to conceal that. But again, I don't know if the residents there would want that because maybe they do like looking out onto Clinton Keith, but I can imagine they probably don't. And so I don't know if there's any thought or discussion with that.
Yeah, Commissioner Reiman, early on, I remember some of the neighbors that lived more closely to the car wash. Those were the folks that I believe expressed requesting some sort of buffering, like an increased wall in height. I think that'd be a good question for the applicant when they present. We do have two rows of trees that are part of the landscape plan. We do believe that headlights, if you will, should be prevented from light spilling into the adjacent properties. But I think that is a question for the applicant.
I, I would think that over time, and, and I think that, just my personal feeling that a, a wall is better than trees that'll eventually grow there, just my thought.
If I may, Commissioner Reiman, we have worked on this product site for a while and have gone through many scenarios. But one request that we did have from the very beginning was to have a wall.
It makes sense. Also, another question, the canopy, what is the height of that canopy from the ground, from the grade of, of where the cars are going to be on there all the way to the, to the top?
So from standing on the ground to the extreme edge, top of the canopy, the roof, if you will, it's 25 feet from the ground to the very top.
Okay, and has there been any type of conceptual, I guess from the, from the resident's perspective where that low fence line sits, you know, would, would they be able to see that? Or is it now that it's tucked a little bit between Clinton Keith and the store right there, or the convenience store? It's not as, I guess, profound to the, to the residents right there as it was in the previous design. It, it's now kind of moved over a bit. Is there, is it still visible?
So the, the, I guess to answer your question, the canopy would be visible at some points in an interim fashion. So we can see most of the canopy will be screened by the convenience store here. But as you mentioned and pointed out, you know, the, the terrain is such that the wall is at its highest point here. And it maintains a height, but once, once it starts to drop, it does drop. And so the, there still will be, will be a slope against this wall, the entire length. There will be the evergreen trees that are planted. When they're planted at the beginning stage, it'll be approximately 12 feet tall and then will grow to a height of 40 and then will be hopsey bushes in front of that. So there will be dense screening, but the canopy being built at 25 feet standing and the landscape being maturing, there's going to be an interim phase where this canopy will be seen, I would say maybe for a year or two before the growth really starts to catch and start growing faster. But in the long-term permanent condition, this will be a solid vegetation wall separating the two zones.
I, I guess I, I see where the, the new canopy kind of extends a little bit, you know, further west, if you will, from the old one. I don't know. I, I just think that the wall, having a wall that would kind of extend on this side of the property is, is, is warranted. I think that's, that's it for my questions.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Reiman. Commissioner Harlan, any questions for staff tonight?
Sure, just a couple. Wanted to echo my fellow commissioners, thank you, with some of the proposed changes that have been, been brought to us here forward and to, to the public for some of the letters and the communication, especially around noise, which has certainly impacted, has a potential there around 18 to 20 residents that this backs up to. Looking at the conditions of approval for section 13, you shall be operated in compliance with the city's noise, noise ordinance, M M C Chapter 16 dot 30, as well as number 22 being off-street loading space, one being required. So looking up the noise ordinance, it breaks out construction and breaks out operations. So operations for commercial properties shows a 24-hour window there with a couple of different allowed noise levels. So the first question, when you look at the C store changes, the average 711 is 2,400 to 4,000 square feet. This is going to be 58 oh four, which certainly looks like it's going to be very nice. Is there any, the back of the building, is that accessible at all?
So there, there will be a path of travel in the back of the building to maneuver delivery items and trash and things like that. But it will be blocked off and gated so that it's not accessible to any non-member of the store, non-employee or owner of the store. So anyone who's a member of the public would not be able to get into the back here.
Would that be for delivery trucks?
If he met, if an employee or staff member was there to allow them in, they would be able to access it. But the delivery person by themselves, no, they would not be able to just go back there.
Okay, maybe, maybe.
And the deliveries would be occurring in the front, but there could be some unknown reason to me why they might need to utilize this path over here.
So if we have the one off-street loading space listed there, and this is going to be a circle K, I believe?
I don't, that, yes, that was the elevation that we had. It could change. That's not necessarily the case, but that, that is the, what we were shown in the approved development plan being a circle K, yes.
Okay, so, so if this is a circle K, you know, question would be, do they have their own trucks, their own warehouse? Is it serviced by maybe somebody like Cormark? With a C store of this size, you're going to get a lot of direct store door deliveries, Coca-Cola, Pepsi, Frito, et cetera. Just maybe with the applicant, we can talk through that exactly how, given the way this traffic flow is, if you get more than one truck, you're either going to have a side loader with the roll-up aluminum doors, which are noisy, or you're going to get the bulk truck with the lift gate and the air brakes, right? As far as where do they park, where do they stage? Because as I look at this, and again, I appreciate the way this is all kind of laid out in this flow, my concern would be where they're currently parking, they're going to be crossing traffic with a pallet jack, right? To get into the back unless you're going to do front door receiving. Or where these trucks are going to try and line up is going to be a long, right up against the back of where these folks' homes are? Because that's going to be the shortest distance to get into the store. So maybe that's something we can talk to the applicant about perhaps?
Yes, we could get greater detail on the specific daily operations or the need, the need of, of, of delivery demand or what the demand is for the delivery, yes.
Because I, I know, for example, let's say a Stater Brothers on Los Alamos that backs up to a freeway, they can come in there at four or five o'clock in the morning, the store will set that, right? There's, there's no noise concern. If you're backing up to a neighborhood, that's generally like a seven to 11. It's usually a tighter window, i.e. a curfew, which it doesn't sound like currently we have set in place.
No, there are, there are no delivery hours established at this point. What I, what I can say is the neighboring store, the C V S, that, that also went to a public hearing. And while city staff reviewed it and provided a recommendation, hours were not a consideration. But during the hearing, the hearing body made the decision to apply some hours to, to delivery times. And so the store is permitted to freely set the hours of their store according to their business plan. But there is a limitation on the hours that they can deliver goods and services to the store.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Harland. Vice Chair Fisher, questions for staff?
I do. How many gallons of fuel are stored in these underground tanks?
So each, each tank stores, the, the version that we're looking at today, each of the, there's two tanks and each one stores 25,000 gallons.
25,000 gallons?
Yes.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think that's correct. That would be huge.
That's huge.
22, I would say.
22,000 gallons of gas are stored in those tanks? And we eliminated one of them and now have two of them. So we have 44,000 gallons of gas in these underground tanks.
That, that is correct and that is a standard, yes.
That's a standard. I would assume that these tanks have a way of not leaking or not emitting any kinds of gases or anything of that sort in the neighborhood area?
Well, we can never say with absolute certainty, but we do know and we, and we, the industry has learned over time through experience that the design of the fuel underground has to be suitable and sturdy enough to avoid leakage that may have happened in prior scenarios. So the design that is required today and regulated by the state of California is a design that in theory does not allow any leaks. But, you know, there is no 100% guarantee of anything, but that with a high degree of certainty, the state of California feels like those tanks are designed to avoid leaks.
I know that the residents would be concerned about any of that possibility of happening. And of course, they've got childrens and pets and things like that that this is going to affect basically on Huckleberry Street, I believe it is. So I'm concerned about that. That seems like a lot of fuel to be stored.
We, we, pardon, pardon my interruption. We may, we may like to hear from the applicant about the design of the fuel tanks and what sort of safety measures are in place to identify if a leak would occur or what is the makeup of the, of these tanks that give us certainty that they do not leak?
Okay.
But Commissioner Fisher, I would like to add that when we say highly regulated, they're regulated by multiple governments. We have South Coast Air Quality Management District, CARB. We have the state of California and the federal government. They're also subjected to seismic law. What you'll find is they're, use a P pebble with metal struts that anchors it in. They have sensor devices. So should there be any odor leaks, I believe that causes an automatic signalization to the operator. And that's how they know how to halt and then properly investigate and see if there was any kind of leakage or spill. But these are highly regulated facilities well up and beyond the planning commission. So just wanted to remind ourselves that, you know, these are, they've come a long way in California because of our earthquakes to make sure that these can withstand quite a lot of pressure and movement.
Okay. I know these are underground and this may be a question that isn't relative, but are the tanks at eye level to the homes? Will any, any of the residents that are on those streets behind this, will they ever see any of those tanks?
They'll not be, they won't be visible.
They won't be visible. They're underground.
Vice Chair, on that point, I think what the neighbors are describing is that their properties are lower in elevation than the property that we're talking about. So when you think about, you know, sinking down a tank, I think that's how they're seen as eye level. The tank would be appropriately, approximately at the elevation of their home. So I think that's what their concern is that if you think about how leaks could occur, you know, they're at that similar depth. And so I think it's just that three-dimensional thought that they're trying to understand is where the depth of the tank would go and how far it would be from their properties.
And that was my next question is, is the grading level difference to homes and backyards of these tanks? I want to stay relative, so we've already approved the project, so. The hours of operation, do we know why? We had approved to 5 A M. to 10 P M. Do we know why they've increased it to wanting a 24-hour period of time?
Well, the original request when we brought this before you was for 24-hour operations. And when the planning commission made their decision, there was some consideration of the hours and they felt like maybe they shouldn't be revised to something different. And so they directed city staff to come up with a range of hours to propose to the planning commission. And that is what we did. The planning commission thought those hours were appropriate and adopted them that way. Our, our reasoning behind the hours that we proposed to you is we took, took consideration the convenience store, some of the hours surrounding the area. we took, took consideration the uh convenience store, some of the hours surrounding the area, and um what the uh customer needs might be. It was not a hundred percent scientific or exact, but it was um it was appropriate for our recommendation uh to the planning commission at the time. So the request for twenty-four hours is simply um a re-request, if you will, from their original um project.
Now, across the street of Clinton Cleed, Clint- Clinton Keith Road, there is a service station and convenience store, if I'm not mistaken. And what are their hours?
Yes, there is a, there is a convenience uh fuel facility there, uh, and it is a twenty-four hour operation.
For both the convenience store and the gas pumps?
Yes.
I would assume that the SEQA has all been cleared for this particular area before the development and grading takes place.
So.
Yeah, the staff believe that the project is still subjected to the exemption under SEQA, the one-five-three-three-two infill development. So our position on the SEQA has not changed.
Still the same.
Yeah, and actually, they've increased the separation distances, so that should lessen the potential impacts when it comes to the items that we previously talked about.
Do we know if the applicant on this property uh owns it or is leasing the property?
The applicant uh owns the property. It is, is their property and they, and they intend on building and operating the, the project themselves.
Has the property been purchased?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, what road improvements on Clinton Keith would be done with regard to uh this new project being approved? If any?
So there will be uh road improvements, and the road will be widened, actually. And so um, we can see with the little arrows on the uh site plan here, the lanes that exist today. And Rick Elzaga, our senior engineer, is here and he can, uh, he will walk us through the new expansion of the ru- road improvements.
So that looks like an additional one-lane addition.
So that is correct. Right now, there's currently two lanes traversing from west to east. And so the improvements, you can see here, there's a decelerating existing. It will be improved, widened, lengthened toward the west. And that will, th- there's a a curb adjustment as well as a median adjustment, I believe, which is gonna accommodate the third lane. And so that's the extent of the public improvements for Clinton Keith.
And there's a deceleration lane there getting into the property, is that correct?
Existing today, yes, and that's going to be, the length will be increased, as you can see on the, on.
Being increased?
Yes.
So being lengthened, that's good. That'll take care of traffic on Clinton Keith, some of the traffic there. Charging stations, um, I see it's twelve circled. Does that mean there are twelve EV charging stations on this projected plan?
It signifies there's twelve spaces, but um, th- that would mean that each charging uh utility, if you will, will have a unit for each of these spaces. So there might not be twelve individual uh charging units. There might be one for each two parking spaces. But there will be a charger for each of these spaces.
You got me confused. I'm sorry.
Uh, Vice Chair Fisher, the applicant is currently uh speaking with different providers that do the EV charging stations. There's different types. There's level two, which takes eight hours. There's level three that does it in twenty minutes. But they're talking with different providers to see who can provide them what. But their intent is to provide that, those spaces for electric vehicle charging stations. If, what we saw is, you recall, beyond Food Mart, and they're thinking about a post-carbon world, they're doing hydrogen, EV, and gasoline. And so you're starting to see a lot of these uh facilities, like gasoline, think about the next future, that customer demand. So especially with the level-three chargers, someone who's there for eighteen, twenty minutes, that can be a convenient location, given its location right before a freeway.
Yeah.
That's why I think you're gonna see a lot more people try to get additional EV charging stations on their properties.
I, I'm trying to wrap my head around, though. There are twelve lanes, let's say, on this map. Are all of those lanes going to be charging stations, one or of, one or the other?
Each lane.
Yeah, and what you'll see is, a lot of times you'll have like one charging station that can serve two vehicles. You, you know, th- there's different types of arrangements, but the, the, the goal would be, like, you might see this in Temecula, when you're driving on uh Alpha Winchester, going to Pachanga, you'll see that Circle K. They always have about eight or nine Teslas out front with the Tesla charging stations. So these are becoming more and more in demand, and it's another revenue stream for the applicant.
Uh, in regard to the canopy, and, and I thank you for moving it forward to, toward uh Clinton Keith. But what is going to be, it's twenty-five feet high, as was mentioned, how about the lighting? How will that impact any of the residents behind this development?
So the um applicant will have to come back in with building permits uh for all of the structures. The canopies will be subjected to our lighting code, although they typically use like LED lights. We have a maximum, we have the forty, fifty lumens, and then the Kelvin approach. So they have to adhere to our current uh code requirements.
Okay. And then the next, last question I have is the initial store size was about thirty-seven hundred feet, I believe you mentioned. And now it's going to be fifty-eight oh four. Can you give me a reason why the increase in square footage?
Yes, we asked the applicant this very question. And it wa- it was explained to us that they redesigned the site and uh took a haircut, if you will, because they don't have a car wash anymore or the propane sales. And so um, in order to make up for that, if you will, they decided to increase the store area so that they could provide more retail services.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. A couple of questions for staff. Um, Aaron, if you could pull up the zoning map? And in the uh neighborhood commerc- commercial and the community commercial, are gas stations allowed in those zonings?
Yes, gas, gas stations are allowed in both of those zones, and they're permitted with a development plan, which means um, if they were simply proposing just a gas station, then that development plan would be processed administratively uh by staff for approval.
So in neighborhood commercial, residential commercial, and community commercial, gas stations are an allowed use of zoning?
Correct.
Um, so as, as we've all said, and as you've, as you've reiterated a few times, we've already approved uh the development plan. Just for technical reasons, this seems like because of the change of the um layout, that this is somewhat of a new development, but we don't need to approve this new design or this new, you know, development?
Well, so we have the project approved in the configuration that it is now. Uh, and the applicant, if the applicant were to apply for building permits and wanted to construct the project, they would have to construct it in the configuration that you, that was approved by the planning commission in December. They have decided to change that configuration, you know, for the reasons we explained in, in the um presentation. And in order for them to construct the project in this new configuration, they'd have to receive approval for the substantial conformance.
Okay. So even though the increase of the community, excuse me, of the convenience store has changed, there's no reason for us to need to approve that?
Well, there wouldn't be a need to consider the increase of the uh retail store. Rather, we would, the commission would be considering the revised plotting locations that we, that we presented this evening.
Perfect. Thank you.
And Chair, typically when you increase square footage, you're increasing the number of parking spaces needed. They're able to uh check that box, if you will. So we have evaluated the increase in square footage and what typically that means. You look at setbacks, you look at parking, you look at height, so it's past those typical checkboxes. But that's why we're asking the commission to, you know, um, make a decision on the um updated plot plan. Otherwise, the previous design stands.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Um, I have no further questions for staff. And, and when we hear from uh the applicant, I, I'd like to ask or, or have them answer the question uh that Commissioner Vroman brought up, which is a concern I have as well. I drive by the site every day on my way to and from work, and it's basically the light shed on the western side. You know, if they've reached out to the neighborhood, or if um the neighbors would want a taller wall or anything like that. Maybe you, maybe the neighbors wouldn't, but if they would be open to constructing a higher wall to block that light shed coming through. Uh, so one question for the applicant when they come up, and um I guess that's it. So with that being said, um, we'll move to the applicant and take testimony from them. So if you'd like to come up to the podium, and please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair La Paglia, and thank you very much, Commission and staff, for your time tonight. My name is Kelly Black. I am working with the applicant on this site. I have a brief presentation, which should be coming up uh anytime uh that we can walk through. And hopefully, I took notes uh while you were having the initial Q and A, so I will try and get through all of the issues that were raised. That's the one. So if you would go, please to the next slide. Just by uh highlighting some of the history that we've already talked about tonight, the project site is adjacent to Clinton Keith and has a general plan designation of regional commercial. And the zoning is split between regional commercial and community commercial. I think it's important to talk about history when we talk about this site. This site has been designated as regional commercial since prior to the inception of the Myrietta Oaks specific plan. How do I know this? I know this because the use was discussed in the Myrietta Oaks specific plan, and specifically compatibility of use between commercial and residential uses. Part of the Myrietta Oaks specific plan included conditions that required, among other things, a six-foot-high attenuation wall. That is the wall that you see on the site today. That was a condition to screen and protect the future residences from the noise that was anticipated, not only from the commercial uses, but also from Clinton Keith Road. That wall extends all the way around the property, because as you know, that property also backs up onto and is adjacent to Interstate two fifteen, another substantial noise generator. So that is why that wall is there. It was a condition of the specific plan. As we have talked about tonight, the project has gone through a design evolution. We have been through an evolution from the moment we submitted the planning, the pre-application in twenty eighteen all the way through our three commission hearings in twenty twenty-two. After the commission hearings in twenty twenty-two, and in order to be a good neighbor and a good business member for the city, we approached staff and asked if we could redesign the site. And that redesign is what's for, before you tonight. If you please, next slide. This is an aerial overview of the site. The site is approximately one point six eight acres net in size. This shows you the CVS on the right-hand side. The site is on the left-hand side. Below it is the uh Hackberry Street with the residences. You can already see from this slide that there is a grade separation, and this is to Commissioner Fisher's question, between our site and the residences. The residences do sit lower than our site. Next slide. This is a view looking southeast from Clinton Keith Road. You will see the uh CVS on the left side. The mound that you see are, is actually spoils. Uh, that was dirt that was excavated from the CVS site, stockpiled on our site. That will be leveled out as part of our development, uh, and the site will be leveled going forward. Next slide. This is a view looking more south towards the residences. Again, you see the wall, and you start to see as the wall changes in grade as we go down to, next slide, please. The final area, which is looking south, southwest. And uh, this is what I would call the, the point of the project area. Next slide. This is, the plan is originally proposed, and you, we talked about this already, and you've talked about it with your staff. As you see, there was a car wash. The C-store and the canopy were oriented to be parallel to Clinton Keith. Next slide. Now we have reoriented both the C-store and the fueling stations to be fronting or looking at Clinton Keith. This serves a couple of purposes. Number one, everything is oriented away from the residences. Number two, we have more eyes on the site now. This site is visible. All aspects of this site, all usable aspects of this site are now visible from Clinton Keith Road. And that is important to us from a safety standpoint. It's also important to us from an operational standpoint. One of the questions that came up was about the area behind the C-store. Commissioner Harland, I believe this was the discussion that you had with staff. That area behind the C-store will be gated. There will be no deliveries taken in that area. All deliveries will have to go through the front door. That is not only a safety issue, it's also a liability issue. Deliveries occur twice a week from one of our vendors. Every other vendor will be once a week. Deliveries will only occur in daylight hours. Unlike grocery stores, which take deliveries from large suppliers and do have to come in at all hours of the day and evening, and I do mean all hours, our deliveries will only be in the daylight hours, and they will all be on the front of the store. This is also why it was important to orient the circulation pattern the way you see it here. We do need the ability to have truck turnarounds. We do need the, have the ability to stage the trucks so they can deliver at the same time we are open and customers are either fueling or getting snacks and uh other uses from the convenience store. Another important thing to point out, and uh Chair La Paglia, this goes to your concern, and I think also Commissioner Vroman's concern, the exit that you see on Clinton Keith towards the narrowest portion of the site, and you notice that our site, our driveway does not go all the way down to the narrowest portion of the site, that is a right-out only. There will be no entrances on that area. So all cars will be running parallel to the residences. And I think that's important, not only from a light village standpoint, but also from a circulation standpoint and a noise standpoint. Next slide, please. This is an artistic rendering of what that exit will look like. You will see on the slide that we have two kinds of trees. We have Leland Cypress trees and purple hopseed bushes. The Leland Cypress trees will be planted. Uh, we will be taking twenty-four-inch box specimens, which are approximately twelve feet in height when planted. They grow uh approximately three feet a year with proper care, which this owner will make sure that his landscapers do properly care for his landscape. And the purple hopseed bushes are twelve feet in height at maturity. They will be about six to eight feet probably in height when they are planted, possibly as high as ten feet. Next slide. This is the slide that we've already talked about. This is the overlay and comparison of the prior site plan versus the current site plan. I think it highlights the fact that we have reoriented all the uses to look onto and to be visible from Clinton Keith Road. I think the other thing that this highlights is the fact that there really is no area to hide on the site now. In the prior design, we had the C-store and the canopy, and then we had a driveway, which meant the side of the C-store was not visible from Clinton Keith. It had no eyes on it. We've eliminated that now. I think it's also important to point out that because we are proposing twenty-four-hour operation, we are proposing to have eyes on this site twenty-four hours a day, and it's not one person. All of our employees work in pairs. Always at a minimum, we will have two employees on one, on-site. One in the store and one possibly conducting a walk-around outside the store or doing other uh, other tasks as may be appropriate. This also highlights another aspect that I think is important to discuss. This also highlights another aspect that I think is important to discuss. And this goes to, I think, Commissioner Fisher's, your discussion of who owns the site and who will operate it. The Salem family have been in this business for over 20 years. They are the owners of this site. They own and operate stores throughout San Diego County, including, among other cities, Ramona, Fallbrook, Poway, Vista, two sites in Vista, Santee, and other areas. They know this business. They know what they're doing and they are good operators. They're also a family-run business. That means that they want to run a business that their family, for generations, can be proud of. That is an important aspect that needs to be emphasized tonight because this family will be running this site. They are not selling it. They are not going to give it off to a third party. Next slide. This was something that was included in Mr. Rinnamaki's display, but I thought it warranted being blown up for our purposes. These are the distance comparisons of the previous site plan versus the new site plan. The only thing that's decreased is the C store separation. It went from 52 feet to 25 feet. Everything else has increased. The canopy building setback, and this is to the property line. This is not including the backyard. So there is further separation when you account for the backyard separation. The canopy is now 84 feet from our property line. The underground storage tanks are now 88 feet from the property line. And the nearest fuel dispenser is now 97 feet from the property line. Next slide. This was something that was brought up and discussed, and I'm glad you mentioned it, Commissioner Fisher. This is a rendering of what an underground storage tank will look like. These tanks are fiberglass. They are double-walled. They have, as you will see, the green that you see as a monitoring fluid. If the first wall, the interior wall of the tank is breached, the tank automatically shuts down, and it cannot be used until it is either repaired or replaced. It is also braced for seismic reasons.
Would you like a few more minutes?
Yes, please. I'm trying to wrap it up as quickly as possible. I'm trying to get all the questions answered.
Go ahead.
It's also braced for seismic reasons. As Mr. Ramaya indicated, that would be letter I below. And it does include a substantial vapor recovery system. In 2007, the state of California instituted new mandates involving vapor recovery. That means now we are required by law, and it is by law from the California State Air Resources Control Board and the South Coast Air Quality Management District, we are required to recover vapor not only when fueling is ongoing, but also when we are refilling the tanks. Next slide, please. As I've already discussed, one of the reasons why we are emphasizing the 24 hours of operation is safety. We want eyes on this site at all times. That's important. We cannot rely on others taking care of what we need to take care of. And that means having our employees trained and knowing how to run a site at all days and all times of the day and night. The Salem family is currently working with a consultant. All of their sites will have individualized plans for security and operations. Their consultant, a former police officer from the city of Chula Vista. They are a family that does right by their businesses. Security cameras will also be onsite and they will be monitored. Employees will be trained on how to deal with loitering and individuals who should not be on the site. They know what to do. Next slide. I thought it important to show you some images of what an actual site that is operated by, owned and operated by this family looks like. This is their newest site in the city of Santee. You might notice it somewhat resembles an airplane hangar. It's because it's located very close to the municipal airport Gillespie Field. They designed the site to fit in with what the city wanted in terms of aesthetics. Next slide. This is one of the interior shots from that convenience store. Next slide. Another shot of the interior of the convenience store. This is what we are bringing to the city of Marietta on this site. We are proud of it, and we look forward to working with you as we move forward. With that, I'll conclude my presentation and ask if there are any questions that I didn't answer.
Yes, you did answer a lot. Thank you. Well, we'll bring to the commission any questions for the applicant. Commissioner Wojcik, we'll start with you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again, thank you for making certain improvements since the last meeting to help mitigate some of the issues that were previously raised in those prior hearings. When did the owners, the current owners, purchase the property?
I believe it was back in 2018, 2019, right around that timeframe.
Okay. And I think based on the diagram, there are 12 pumps?
Correct.
At the station, 12? Typically, how many gallons would go through 12 pumps throughout the year? I know you haven't tested this market, but typical.
So the California Air Resources Control Board has a designation of what is a major gas station versus what is a quote-unquote "typical" gas station. A typical gas station, which would be something like this, would have a throughput of approximately 2.3 million gallons per year, approximately. A major gas station, something like Costco, would have a throughput of approximately 3.6 million gallons per year.
Earlier, I asked about the location of the canopy or pumps from the property boundary on the north side. Is it problematic to move it further towards the street if the trucks were to use the entrance on the east side and exit out on the west side?
So that east side is an exit-only. We are not allowing customers to enter from that side. You're talking, the unregulated or...
No, that's the west side you're talking about. The east side has the light.
Yes.
Right. They would enter the east side and they could exit out the west.
Correct.
If the canopies were pushed even further towards the street, would that still be possible to get your deliveries and the fuel trucks in there so they can enter one way, exit the other, and still push it further from the homes?
I would have to defer to the owner on this, but I believe we have pushed the limit as far as we can in terms of the location of the canopy versus the fuel trucks and what they require for safety in terms of turnaround. Also, I know they did look at moving the tanks to the other side of the canopy so they would be basically adjacent to Clinton Keith, but that posed another round of safety issues. It also posed a round of fueling operation issues that were concerning.
I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Wojcik. Commissioner Vrumen, any questions for the applicant, Ms. Black?
I do, a few of them. Aaron brought up the driveway, and then you just mentioned it again, that it's an exit-only on the west driveway. How's that going to be mitigated? How do we... Are you going to make sure that cars only go out that other driveway versus somebody deciding, hey, they want to turn in?
If you could bring up the slide that showed that exit.
That might be an answer, a question that Rick can help us with as well.
Right.
Sure. So the reason for the configuration is to not lend itself for a right-turn movement. Can somebody physically make the movement? Maybe so, but that is not the intent of the design. And it's, there won't be signage promoting a right-turn lane there. But one day, can somebody physically do it? Probably so. But those would probably be rare cases.
That's why I wanted to make sure is that there's some signage or anything like that because if they do slow down to make a right turn as they're going eastbound on Clinton Keith right there, obviously you could, you got stop traffic behind. People would slow down, those type of things like that. So it's not made for that. So just how to mitigate that from a traffic engineering standpoint?
So it's offset for that reason. Even the pedestrian walk pathway is setting a way for safety. Line of sight, all those things were considered. So it's also potentially a secondary access for emergency if necessary. But the use is not for that. It's going to be for the interior. It'll be shown as one-way out only. Maybe on the onsite, on the private property, they may have a signage, exit-only or something. But those details will come up in the actual construction drawings.
Would the city put something up further down west before the driveway saying, "No right turn in driveway", or something along those lines? Is that a...
Well, typically, we would not do that. Not to say that we could not do that, but again, it's something we can look at once we get into the details of it. But that would also involve a traffic engineer to make sure that something appropriate, if needed, can be put in.
Okay. You did mention, I think one of the reasons for the expansion of the size of the convenience store was to add more retail. And then when you showed that picture of the Chula Vista, which it does look nice, I noticed there was a sandwich shop attached to it inside.
It's called a QSR, a quick-serve restaurant. And that would be something that the owner would consider having at the site as well.
Okay, so is that like a separate company or retailer that's kind of subleased? Or, and would that trigger any type of other city permitting or processes?
So as long as the use that they were proposing to share the space with fit within the zone, that would be the extent of the review that would take place. But then there would be consideration for signage that they might want. And that's something that we would look at individually.
I notice a lot of, over the last probably 15 years or so, a lot of convenience stores, gas stations have got other realtors, or I'm sorry, not realtors, but, you know, use the real estate for, you know, sublet, maybe Starbucks or some other type of separate, like the Albertos or what have you. And some of them come with drive-throughs, others don't. So they have them attached, you know, Taco Bell, Pizza Hut, those type of things like that. So I didn't know if that was in the plans, but it sounds like it is, but it's not, but it's managed by the same.
Correct. A drive-through would not be contemplated.
Right, not a drive-through, but a separate.
It would be something like, that one was the Earl of Sandwich. You could have a Wetzel's Pretzels. You could have, as you pointed out, a Los Primos or an Alberto's, something like that. As I said, it's known as a QSR, a quick-serve restaurant.
Also, the wall.
Yes.
So Commissioner Harland had brought up, you know, delivery hours and is, I'm just wondering if there's something you say that, okay, hey, deliveries aren't going to be made during the daytime. And I'm just wondering, this might be a staff question, that we would put that or add that into the conditions of approval. So that way, if ever the property sold, that it would be, and again, there's probably no intention to do that, but that would be guaranteed heretofore that that would always stay during daylight hours.
Looking at the owner, I believe that you intend to operate this. This is going to be in the family, but you have no problem. As you said, all of his deliveries are currently during working hours, during business hours, during the day.
Yeah, I think he specified daylight hours. So I think that would be something that we would want to memorialize long-term because 50 years from now, when none of us are here, that would stay with the property, right? But then also too, back to the sandwich shop, back to delivery, back to all... I see the charging stations. Obviously, more traffic, more vehicle traffic, more people coming using, which is obviously the intent of the property owner to do that, which goes back to the wall, which goes back to, you know, having some type of a buffer or barrier there if that's what the residents want. I just don't see in that lower portion why that couldn't be added.
I understand the request. And our thought is, from a safety standpoint, having a wall adjacent to a wall might invite a little bit of trouble, but that is something that we could absolutely look at.
I think it would probably eliminate more trouble than what it would cause. I don't know, from an engineering standpoint, maybe, you know, but I just see, it would, aesthetically is one thing, but also in a practical sense, noise and things like that, until the trees kind of grow in maturity, that it would almost level out the top of the wall because it does dip down, even though it's six foot, as you had mentioned. It does dip down quite at a low elevation right there on the property where that driveway, where that driveway kind of comes in right there. The last, I think, five homes on the west side of the property, their backyards or their second-story windows look right out at that elevation.
That is something that we are absolutely willing to discuss with staff.
It's important from my perspective.
I understand. I would say, though, that we would not touch the existing wall because I don't know how it was engineered.
No, and I wouldn't be advocating for that. I would say something on your...
On our property, on our side of the property.
Right.
Commissioner Vrumen, if the commission wished, they could place a condition to provide a wall and ask that staff refine the details of the placement location if they wished.
Got it. Now, I'd look to my peers if that was important to them as well.
Yeah, it is. And I think, and I was thinking about that, you know, I feel like as long as the grade of the asphalt on this west side that we're concerned about and the existing wall, you know, sheltered light from, you know, a semi-truck, right? That would be pretty, that would be pretty suitable. I see what you're saying. If the grade's higher than the wall and then the car sits on top of that grade and it shines light over, that could be a problem.
It's almost like the vehicles going out would essentially sit at the top of the fence level, the way that I look at it, so...
Like the way the grade is right now?
Yes, the way the grade is right now. So I don't know what it would look like. But then also, I think we brought up too, the truck delivery of the gas. And so the natural, I think it would be, in a practical sense, those truck deliveries, they're going to go out that west driveway, right? I mean, it just would make sense that they would just make that fluid motion. I don't see some of the gas trucks that are carrying two trailers would essentially, you know, want to do a turnaround depending on the amount of vehicle traffic that's already in there. They're going to want to go out that west driveway right there.
Yeah, the only thing I could say on that, you know, and being in the trucking industry, you know, is like Aaron had said, this is a controlled stoplight down here. I see what you're saying. It might be hard to turn around on this property, but the risk of, you know, cars coming at you 50 miles an hour and you missing a shift or whatever and causing a traffic jam or an accident on the west exit could be enough motivation for drivers to go out on the east exit. It could also maybe be a requirement from the operator to have the delivery trucks all exit on the west side.
And use the controlled intersection, correct?
And use a controlled intersection. So that's just one point to make. But I see what you're saying because you're concerned about the light shed going into like the second-story windows, kind of?
Well, that and the noise and even the visibility of it, right? Because you have taller, like a bobtail type of delivery truck.
Sure.
So let's say it's not a gas truck, but it's something that's tall. And if they're looking out their windows and they're just seeing the tops of the trucks roll by, you know, out their back window, it...
Yeah.
It just seems that maybe the higher wall at that lower elevation, or I'm sorry, at that lower wall on this side of the property, as I'm looking at the picture here, would make sense and make the wall appear that it was more consistent at the top all the way down the property line.
Yeah, no, I agree. I see what you're saying. Maybe, you know, I'm sure we'll have some public comment tonight. So, you know, if you all want to chime in on a bigger wall or something, feel free to. But sorry, go ahead and finish your questions.
No, that was my only questions. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, Commissioner Vrumen. Commissioner Harlem, any questions for the applicant?
Sure, just a couple. Thank you for the presentation, the pictures and the specifics. Much appreciated. The front door receiving, I applaud you for that because that's going to get your folks in and out a whole lot quicker than backdoor receiving and getting checked in and everything else and noise-wise. So I think that's fantastic. Just if we can pull up the map again overlaying of what... There you go. Just being in a, from a prior life, doing store door deliveries, I know when I'm driving my van or my truck, I know where I'm parking. And that's to the west of the convenience store, up against that fence. You know, stepping out and looking at the folk, looking in everybody's backyards, that run right there... that run right there, that's not going to be used for staging trucks and loading, correct? You're going to use the specific dedicated space? As I understood it, right?
Correct, the the loading space should all be in the front, I wouldn't anticipate, knowing knowing delivery guys, they want to walk the shortest distance possible.
Yes.
Especially when they've got a pallet jack, so and and they need that ramp to get that pallet jack up, so yes, they would be in that loading area towards the front of the store as as close as possible.
Okay, is and if it's possible, just I think for the residents that are that are here and for the ones that aren't here, maybe along that wall to perhaps post a no no park, no truck parking staging area? Because I think, and again, that's going to look pretty convenient if somebody pulls in.
Understood.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
That all, okay, thank you, Commissioner, Vice Chair Fisher, any questions for the applicant?
Just a couple, just a couple, thank you. Again, thank you for these photos, they they do help, where is the front entrance to the retail store? I don't see an entrance here at all.
I, right where Aaron is moving the mouse.
Okay, that's the that's the anticipated space. And regarding the exit, you've got a bike lane there. How are we protecting the safety of bicyclists who are coming up Clinton Clinton Keith? All of a sudden, a car is turning out or a truck is turning out, passing the bicycle lane, how does that work?
I will defer to your city engineer on that one.
Well, not city engineer, we're senior engineer, yes, so the the bike lanes are there and for, you'll notice when there's a driveway or something, the the bike lane will then become striped. So we try and provide striping or signage the best possible, but, you know, it's really up to the the bike, the cyclist and the drivers to to just pay attention, there's not, so we do our best, but you know, accidents still happen.
But a bicyclist who's been going on Clinton Keith Road forever, they will know that there's a new driveway there that would have exiting traffic.
So usually, again, there are indicators in the striping, they become dashed, so they know there's openings for vehicles to come to enter their bike lane, and so there there's signage as well, so those are the two types of indicators, that visual indicators that cyclists to inform them that something's coming up ahead.
And I think somebody who is used to biking on Clinton Keith will see as the construction is ongoing, they will notice that there is a driveway being put in place, and I'm sorry, I promoted you.
And Vice Chair, there will be a stop sign for vehicles, they have to stop before the pedestrian walkway, which is well before the the bike lane, and the cyclists themselves have to be observant on who's accessing, but we think the transition is consistent with our regulations.
That area now, the area to the left of the pumps, is that trash recycling area? Or it says three in there and there's three lanes, and then there is a crossed area, what is that area there?
That's the loading.
That is a secondary loading area?
So I I was mistaken earlier, I saw the dashed, that's a handicap van loading.
That's a handicap.
This is loading space.
This is what?
Loading space.
Loading space for what?
Deliveries coming into the C store.
So, okay, so they're going to hand truck it from there?
It's a required loading space, they they are not required to park there every time, but it is a dedicated area that is required to be provided for loading.
Okay, those are my questions.
Thank you, Vice Chair, well, thanks for the redesign, I I think I think it's an improvement personally. I think the the store provides more blockage, you know, from the residents, which was a concern. To highlight a couple of things that you guys did, you moved the tanks further away, the lighted canopy is further away, and it sounds like they're gonna, or, you know, having some EV charging is, you know, a hot commodity right now and becoming more popular. Obviously, I I think we touched on it earlier, but the ABC license for alcohol sales, if that's approved tonight, is just for beer and wine, no hard liquor.
So what you would be approving tonight, as I understand it, is a condition that requires us to come back with an MCUP?
Right.
And go through the city process, that is one step of the process. The second process would be us going through ABC and applying for what's known as an off-sale beer and wine license. And what that generally means is selling beer and wine at designated hours for off-site consumption. This is the person that is running through on their way home.
Yes, yes, okay, just wanted to confirm that, and the twenty-four hour of operation, having two people on site, I do think that's a a positive thing as well, I think that having somebody on site, more eyes on site, you know, for whatever event could happen is is a good thing. And, you know, I do understand that it is it is a little bit more area to make more money, which I do agree, you know, I I've been at a gas station getting coffee at four AM, and I'm not the only one in there, so it gives folks opportunities to to do that before they get on the freeway. Commissioner Vreman, I agree that, you know, we can include in the conditions of approval tonight that the delivery hours are only daylight hours, or maybe that was also Commissioner Harlem, and I think I don't think the applicant would have a problem having that, that delivery hours are only during the daylight hours. That way, we would prevent any delivery trucks, backup alarms, air brakes going off at, you know, midnight, two, three, four o'clock in the morning, when these folks are are sound asleep. So with that, that's all my questions for the applicant, thank you for coming up, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And we will continue moving on. Okay. Mr. Take it, Mr. Wait for, yeah, Commissioner, yeah, maybe, yeah, we could do that, we could do, let's let's take a just a quick five minute recess, everybody. Have a quick bathroom break, we will resume at at seven forty-three, thank you. Okay, let's continue the hearing, it's seven forty-three. Hope everyone had a nice recess. We will now move on to the public testimony at seven forty-three. Madam Secretary, do we have any public comments, starting with proponents, opponents, and those neutral?
Yes, we have Mariana DeBauer.
All right. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, my name is Marina DeBauer, and I live at two seven six five three Hackberry Street, I am the fourth house from the corner on the west side. I will be looking directly at this establishment. We love our home, we just purchased a year ago, we had no idea this was going to go in our backyard. I live there with my husband, who's a firefighter and Navy veteran, our five children and several pets. We are completely against this going in our backyard, we do not want it open twenty-four hours because of the noise and the increase in crime. We would like, if this were to go forward, a wall, like you were suggesting. We we don't want anyone jumping that wall into our backyard or anything like that. We have a daycare on the street, she gets stuff thrown into her backyard from the CVS, it's not okay. I'd like to quote from your planning commission resolution, this is your quote, "There are adequate provisions for sanitation, water, and public utilities and services to ensure public convenience, health, safety, and general welfare." "I don't believe you are concerned about our health, safety, or general welfare. We have expressed time and time again that we don't want a gas station directly behind our homes for many reasons, to include but not limited to fire danger, dropping home values, the potential for an increase in crime, increase in noise, and my biggest concern are health and the health of our children. Benzene is a known carcinogen, there are no safe levels of benzene for humans. Research shows that there is an increase in cancer rates when you live near a gas station. We already have the two fifteen Clinton Keith, we have an AMPM. How much more pollution do you want to expose us to? We already breathe in so many toxins, so to approve another establishment that is toxic sends a message from the planning commission, members, that you don't really care, that you care more about the profit. Loopholes are always exploited by developers so they can get their way and capitalize on their greed at the expense of others. We hope that whatever business does open up there, it will be something that contributes to the neighborhood, not poison it. We will not allow these developers to bully our community and cities into polluting our neighborhood, and we are holding all of you accountable, thank you."
Thank you.
Fabio Lavender?
Welcome.
Good evening, I had something prepared, but to be honest, it doesn't matter. We all already heard and know this is all about profit, has nothing to do with, it's not beneficial to our neighbors, it's not beneficial to our community. Everything you saw there, I mean, the loopholes, that was a perfect example and argument, because especially the the EV parking and the charging, they would have to back up in those things, they would, the lights would literally zoom and beam in in front of our houses, no tree can do anything about that, there won't grow, a tree won't grow that fast in a year. I mean, this is complete nonsense, everything that's been talked about, especially when it comes to protecting family wealth, well, we have family wealth as well, we have families, we have home, we're homeowners, we build value in our host houses, and it's all going to drop, it's all going to, the value's going to decrease, I can promise you that, I'm in real estate, I'm a realtor myself, and I've seen it, I've seen it many times, I've seen it in our neighborhoods, I've seen people sell their homes because of that reason, knowing it, a hundred percent, that's why, it's just complete nonsense, and I'm just here to tell you all that we will, the whole community, try everything we can to just cancel this project and do whatever it takes, if it's an appeal, if it's us standing against it, we will do anything, you can, I can promise you that, all of us will do anything we can to stop this, because it's hurting our community, it's hurting our children, it's hurting our health, and none of you guys would want that for yourself, so please consider that, thank you.
Thank you.
Chad Lavender?
Hello, welcome. Thank you very much, good evening, Commissioners, I am also resident and homeowner in Marietta Oaks Community at two seven seven one three Hackberry Street. I just wanted to speak today, so a little bit of my stuff is going to be unprepared, just because after tonight's events, some of the things have, my opinions have changed, so I'm coming here before you today, as a homeowner and a Army veteran that lives in the Marietta Oaks Community, our neighborhood is full of a lot of heroes in the community, whether that goes from healthcare, firefighting, veterans and blue collar workers to the backbone of our community. Every day, the citizens that are the backbone of our community, we fight to sustain, we we fight to keep, we fight and put ourselves in risky situations daily to support our community, our country and our families, to maintain their safety and American way of life, as the backbone of the community and our selfless, our selfless service, we deserve the health and safety of our families. As a current Army medic, serving in the Army for over ten years now, I've experienced many situations involving pollution, public health situations, harmful effects it has, this has went planned improperly. Many members of this community, including myself, put ourselves in unsafe conditions in order to have a safe home for us and our families to go to, yet another unnecessary gas station based solely on profit of a very wealthy family jeopardizes the safety of our homes. We deserve the safety that we have fought for, for your families, for our families. This poorly placed gas station will not only put hazardous gas lines in our backyards, and will also expose the health effecting chemicals on a daily basis in our homes while we sleep at night. The health and safety is my main concern, but we cannot ignore the negative economic impact that this gas station will have over our community's equity. This gas station cannot be a decision made by our council members solely based on investment and money at the expense of our community and citizens. We need you to make the right decision, stand up for our families, as many of us have stood up for yours. This gas station cannot be in our backyards, I ask you all, I ask you all to put yourselves in our family's shoes and make the right decision, I pray that you make the honorable decision. And another issue or hazard that I did notice while looking at the decisions was the fact that when cars are exiting on that that exit only route, it is going to be facing a little bit to the right. There are many kids that are going to be walking and riding bikes on that route, as you see, so those cars are virtually almost going to be turning backwards to avoid those kids. Many kids walk to and from our neighborhood to the high school, and then from the neighborhoods over near the high school to the or families also to the school over there. I ask that you guys consider these safety hazards and put yourselves in our shoes when it comes to thinking about your families and you living right behind that gas station.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Shepherd?
Hello, welcome. Hello, so I live on Hackberry Street, right behind my house would be one of the houses that would be affected by the lights. I just want to let all of you know that these men, the city planners, have manipulated us and deceived us and baited us on multiple occasions, that's why we are where we are right now. I believe that if they had listened to us and or not manipulated us since two thousand nineteen when we opposed this project from the beginning, we would not be where we're at. I also want to point out that the oil tanks that they're talking about and the safety measures, accidents happen every day, we all hear about oil spills, about natural disasters that cause oil spills, this is literally at eye level feet from our homes, where our children play, where our animals are, where we reside. I don't think that anything can be done if there is some sort of disaster like this, that land will be ruined. And I don't I don't know how to express this any other way, then this would be a major loss that is inconceivable. I, it's it's our lives that these people are playing with, if this was across the street with some sort of barrier, this would be a completely different scenario, and I think it, sorry, I'm doing this on the fly. I think that if the zoning was properly zoned from the beginning, this never would have happened. I think that there's many flaws in the zoning that just make this project completely wrong, you're next to sensitive receptors, like I I look at the the notes that they or the pictures that they have in, we're sensitive receptors right behind it, yes, it's zoned for these commercial properties, but you didn't take for account that there are very highly sensitive receptors behind you. Let's see, the hours of operation, I just can't even believe this is on the table with us right there. It it doesn't even make sense to me that there's many convenience stores, Costco can be considered a convenience store, and they're, they closed hours, it just, it doesn't seem like it should just be inevitable that they get to open whenever they want. Actually, can I think, I want to read this, can I have somebody donate their time to me, is that okay? Okay, and then.
Okay, can we, so can we allow another three minutes to her timer?
You can allow extra time at your discretion.
Sure, if someone liked to donate their time officially.
It's not a donating time, it's.
Not a donating time issue, it's just at your discretion. If you wanted to allow additional time, you can. You don't need to, you don't need to go through the process of identifying another person.
More time. How much more time would you like?
I have two pages. I just wanna get.
Is it, is it the letter that we've already read?
Uh, parts of it, but not all of it. Uh, those are some key points, but I, I do feel like it is important and my husband and my son also at requested time, so that would be another six minutes. Okay.
Another three minutes.
Okay, thank you for hearing our concerns regarding this project. We all again feel a little blindsided and that communication was again dropped regarding this process. This continues to happen and we get a very little time to research and try to respond, respond effectively. Residents on multiple occasions now have reached out regarding updates and have asked to be informed on any new information and have not been communicated with except by a letter in the mail ten days prior by our city planners. We've been emailing the mayor, city planners, everybody, and we get ten days notice. This doesn't make any sense to me. They knew about this when the appeal was, when we tried to do our appeal. Why were we not communicated with that this was an ongoing thing? And that our concerns wouldn't be heard. And that we are a third party in this whole scenario and we are directly affected by this. I don't know why we weren't communicated with before that. And, and we have requested that. We're invested in this community and we're busy, we have families and jobs and don't have the means or the time and lawyers to, to do this. Um, and we feel that they, the company, the corporation, the business, the establishment has lawyers and then you also have lawyers that are working in their favor. They haven't worked in our favor for any part or aspect of this. And we are members of this community, they're all here to represent us, not this company that's here for profit only. Um, this whole entire situation has been nothing short of confusing and frustrating and is nothing any of us would ever wish upon anyone else in this community. My hope with this is that you all have some insight. Um, and some empathy and compassion towards this. We all feel our property rights are being violated with all this. Uh, we feel desperate for help and we're asking you to do everything in your power to stop this. I, it, it, I feel like threatened for my family's health, safety and quality of life. Our lives for the past four years now have been questionable. We don't, they're full of stress. Sleepless, sleepless nights and that a fear that a business would go in connected to our back fence. That would bring such safety concerns and health concerns that we would not feel comfortable staying in here. As my neighbor, uh, uh, spoke about, many of the residents have already sold. Or not, a lot of us don't have the luxury to do that. A lot of us love where we live. We've been there for so long, we're established in this spot. I don't understand why we have to up, up, I mean, be so highly affected negatively by this and we have to defend our properties the way that we are. I can't stress enough to all of you the concerns we all share and the ongoing frustrations we've experienced.
That was in the, another three minutes. I, I feel like you, you've conveyed your message very, very well.
I, I mean, the hours of operation, the lighting, all of those things are major concerns. My biggest concern would be the contamination of the soil in our backyards. And I don't think anybody's addressed that at all. I think that the vapors that, that will land on our property is detrimental to our health. This is so concerning. Like my other neighbor said, the benzene risks. There's a hundred and fifty chemicals that are plus chemicals that are in oil.
Well, we'll, we'll allow the applicant to come back up and maybe have some more clarification on, on, on that kinda stuff. If they're really, you know, the hazardous.
Chemicals that we'll be exposed to.
Could be.
Yeah.
But, okay, I think that's, that was a fair amount of time and, you know, I appreciate you coming up here and giving us your, your, your heart and soul and you know, we, we, we understand where you're coming from and, and, you know.
One more thing, they showed us an established, I mean, a non-established gas station. And I would like to see pictures and I think we all should visit some of their established sites. There was tagging on one of the windows.
City, city attorney, are we allowed to sat, have some photos shown or?
Of some established sites that they have already?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you're asking.
I just say, they wanna, they wanna show some photos of an established site or something?
Well, they're welcome to provide the commission with any documentation.
Yeah.
If they have it, but if they don't have it with them right now, I don't think there's anything.
Do you have it with you right now?
No, I, my other neighbor has a, a video. But I just plead with all of you to please take our health, our safety, our families into consideration. If you would not want this in your backyard, if I bought here and this was already established, that I would it, it would be silly for me to do this, but I, I live here. I, I don't think any of you would ever allow this in your backyard. So please act in our favor, do as you can to help prevent, protect us and prevent this from going in.
Okay, Ms. Shepherd, thank you.
Robert Blackman.
Hello, Mr. Blackman.
Hi.
Welcome, back.
Glad to be here. So, um, I'm definitely gonna go over three minutes. My wife has a little sign, so I'm gonna go ahead and ask that I may have her three minutes.
Okay.
I'll fly through this as quick as possible.
Six minutes on the clock.
And before you start, just so I can clarify further, I did look it up just to be clear on what the rules were and um, they are allowed to allocate time from another member who's present. And has submitted a speaker to speak, but again, you, your use of your discretion was all, was allowable as well, so.
Okay.
Just wanna be uniform about it.
Okay, all right, well, we, six minutes is good.
I will try not to be, I will try not to abuse the privilege.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We could start, we could start the time now.
Yeah, and go. Thank you for previewing my slide earlier. I appreciate that. Are we gonna, okay, there we go. So if I could get in advance to the first slide? Yeah, next slide, please. Okay, so we had a lot of emails back and forth with staff and one of the emails specifically, I was referencing some of the the verbiage in the original planning documents written by staff and they referenced a fifty foot barrier and everything else. And I was told that actually the, the regulations, the guidelines had been updated. And that I needed to refer to the guidelines in the two thousand twenty-two guidelines. So, and they specifically pointed to the risk tool. Uh, David helpfully pointed that out, said use the risk tool, so I did. If we go to the next slide, please. So on the left, you'll see from the forty-five foot, the original plan. I ran this and I actually ran it at two, two, two million, two hundred thousand, two hundred thirty-two thousand, which was what was in the plan. You're saying it's actually two point three I should have used, so these numbers are actually potentially low. But using the risk tool that David specifically pointed me to, the original plan had a cancer risk of sixteen point six four per million. Guidelines are for no more than ten. So we were already in violation on the original plan, using the risk tool that again, David asked me to use. So I, that explains to me why it was, we are where we are now, where the plans have been redrawn. It seems like somebody realized that they, that the distances were not adequate. Even with the eighty-four feet though, and again, with a lower number of two, two million point two three two, comes back using the tool again that David asked me to use at eleven point eight two, again, in excess of ten. So that is a quantifiable cancer risk using the tools that I was asked to use from the state, from the, the website that I was directed to by staff. So, cancer risk eleven point eight two versus a maximum allowable of ten. If I can get the next slide, please. That is right there, ten. No more than ten is allowable. This plan is, I don't understand how we're even having these conversations. We're already in violation. I, I don't, how, why are we here? Next, please. Okay, using, looking at the land use in the general plan. Land use fifteen point two, specific to Clinton Keith. Ensure adequate buffers are provided between residential and non-residential uses. If you look at the next slide, please. I'm trying to figure out exactly what the distance is between the retail property and the residential property. The nearest I can tell it's zero point zero meters. The residential property and the retail property, there's, there's no buffer. I would just, it's ridiculous. If I could go back one, please. Additionally, encourage a range of retail uses serve local residents. Again, this is from the general plan. We have a gas station across the street. Do we need another gas station? That's not, that doesn't seem like a lot of variation, a lot of very, a range of retail. We continue, next slide, please, next slide. Okay, this is the fun one. We are in a very high fire severity zone in Marietta Oaks. Is that circle? That's us. You wanna put a gas station immediately behind our houses and we are in a very high fire zone, severity zone, wildfire zone. When we signed our mortgages, we had to sign paperwork that said we lived in a wildfire zone. And you wanna put a gas station directly behind our houses? Doesn't seem smart to me. I'm, I'm just a resident, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a, a scientist, but seems pretty obvious to me that putting a gas station directly behind residents in a wildfire zone, maybe not the best, best decision making. Next slide, please. Additionally, four thousand one hundred fifty fires annually at gas stations every year in the United States. Immediately behind our houses. Not an expert, that seems like a problem. All right, next slide. Oh, this is fun, okay. Talking about the elevation, I'll, I'll just give the short version of this. We've already talked about the eye line and everything else. Gasoline and benzene specifically are denser than air. That's a scientific fact. Not a scientist, but you can Google it. Gas vapors, benzene are gonna naturally tend to go to the lowest point. Directly behind the gas station into our backyards. So anything, the calculations that we're using are potentially off because I don't think they're accounting for the drop in elevation. So I would like to have a study on that. What does the drop in elevation do to that, that calculation that we are again, already over ten per million? Next slide, please. In addition, and we've talked about this, but the higher the concentration of alcohol retailers in a location, specifically off-premise, the higher the violent crime. We already have CVS, we have AMPM, we have Target, all within walking distance of our, of our neighborhood. All with off-premise liquor licenses and we're talking about adding another, I realize that's not specifically in discussion tonight, but I wanna put that in your ear right now. Next slide, please. Additionally, C-stores are the fourth most common location for violent crime. Gas stations, by the way, happen to be seventh. That's primarily because of the twenty-four hour operation. Twenty-four hour operations are targeted for robberies directly behind our houses. If a criminal is backed up, if the police happen to show up, where are they gonna go? Into our neighborhood. They're not gonna go into Glen Keith, they're gonna go into, how many police chases have you seen that go into neighborhoods? Directly into our backyards. Next slide, please. Almost done. Two thousand thirty-five, we're phasing out gas vehicles. Now I realize the general plan only goes to two thousand thirty-five, coincidentally. But why exactly do we need to put what is built-in obsolescence in a location? Why are we putting a gas station in when, in basically a little over a decade, by the time this thing is built, we're talking about a decade. At which point you won't even be able to buy a gas powered vehicle in this, in this state. And that's gonna be a transitional period. It's not gonna be, it's not like it's gonna happen immediately. And that's, that's, uh, that's basically it. I, I, I just, you know, I have, there is one more slide, but I'll just speak to it. The golden rule. Do unto others, and this has been referenced, I'll look directly at the developers. We brought this up when you guys were in the, the, the library at Antelope Hills. And we asked you guys, I don't remember, I think potentially you were there, the, Mr. Lawyer Man. Maybe not, another good-looking gentleman. Either way, we specifically said if you, if you had a gas station potentially going directly behind your houses, would you be cool with that? Would you be okay with that? I can't believe the answer would be yes and similarly. So we'd ask, do unto others. If you wouldn't want a gas station directly behind your house, creating a documented, quantifiable cancer risk. Why, why are we allowing this? Why would you vote in that, that way? Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Jose Shepherd. Lourdes Blackman. Tony Delansky. That's all we have.
So that is all, okay. Well, thank you all for coming up and, you know, speaking on behalf of this important development. I think with that, we can allow for the applicant to rebuttal if they may choose so. So it seems like we've got some concern about, you know, we should probably really address this, um, you know, the results first, this, this eleven point eight two number that, um, was used on the calculation, the risk tool.
The CAPCOA twenty twenty-two risk tool. It is a health risk assessment tool. It is an estimation tool only. It is not by any means tested, it's only twenty twenty-two. Uh, and it is a guidance tool. It is not, uh, dispositive. It is not something that we are, um, that is implemented by law. What is implemented by law is what I previously discussed, which is, involves the sighting and the separation between gas stations and adjacent uses. And specifically, and we talked about this extensively during the October hearings, the minimum site distance requirement was fifty feet. We were at that minimum and I understand that was problematic. We are now over eighty feet away. And the fuel dispensers are at ninety-seven feet. So that's one thing that I would talk about or that, uh, I would respond to on that. In terms of the appropriateness of use. As I said at the start of my presentation, this site was zoned regional commercial prior to Marietta Oaks being constructed. When Marietta Oaks was evaluated, interference and potential land use conflicts were discussed, not only in the specific plan, but in the EIR. When any of us look at a property, those of us who know what a major real estate investment is, and that includes developers. What are some of the things that we look at? Is the general plan appropriate? Is the zoning appropriate? How long has the general plan and zoning been in place? Is a CUP required? What kind of hearing requirements are there? What kind of design requirements are there? What kind of zone requirements, setbacks and setting requirements are there? This site has an approved by right use for a gas station. It's in the zoning code. It has been in the zoning code since the late nineties. When our client did his due diligence, as he should do when he is looking at new properties, he had to look at that. And he had to look at whether or not he would have to ask for a general plan amendment or a zoning update. And I can guarantee you, if he had had to ask for those things, he wouldn't have gone with this site. But the assumption is, when the city puts zoning in place, when the city does its general plan, when the city does specific plans, land use compatibility issues are looked at and they are looked at in depth. And the case before you tonight, the history bears that out. All you have to do is look at the Marietta Oaks history and you will see that land use compatibility was discussed. The project includes mitigation measures to address land use compatibility issues. Our client chose this site because it is a good city site. Marietta is a safe city. This is a city he wants to do business in. This is a city he wants to be a part of. It's one of the best cities. Just yesterday, you had another public, uh, release, a public media release about how this city was voted one of the best cities by the readers of Inland Empire Magazine. This business wants to be in one of the best cities.
Thank you, Ms. Black. And, you know, just, just to be clear too, the, the project's already approved, right?
Correct.
You know, like the gas station's already approved. We're here to discuss the hours of operation and, you know.
The sighting.
And, and what?
The sighting, the site changes.
Sure, and the site changes and, you know, um, so to speak on some of the topics of, of the site changes, if we could just kinda redirect to that, you know.
Yes.
Is, is the applicant, um, is, is he, um, willing to build a, a wall? Obviously that fits the city code and, and whatnot to maybe shelter some of the light and noise. To maybe shelter some of the light and noise and, you know, sight as we, we heard a couple of that, a couple of the residents wanted?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's a big check. Uh, commissioners, any other questions for the applicant in rebuttal to, um, you know, the public testimony? Or are there any other, any other comments from the public that you wanted to address?
I think for the most part, um, we have talked about it. Uh, we have talked about the benefit of the twenty-four hour operations in terms of security, in terms of eyes on the ground, more people monitoring the cameras, the sighting of the building oriented towards Clinton Keith, the fact that all of the area of the property is now visible from Clinton Keith. We have tried to minimize to the extent feasible and possible through design areas that would not have eyes or cameras on them.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Go ahead.
The, uh.
Chris Vreman.
Yeah, I know you, uh, you'd mentioned or you addressed it and I don't know if staff could kind of clarify, but Mr. Blackman, you brought up that, that chart. Uh, the risk factors and the numbers with that. Is that something that a, uh, South Coast Air Quality would, would, would look at and, and before issuing a permit or how, how does that work?
Yeah, so previously we explained to the planning commission that you're not the last decision maker on air quality. That is South Coast Air Quality Management District. I would say that, uh, we had a, a gas station across the street and that was denied by South Coast Air Quality Management District because of the proximity to the high school. So it's not, I mean, there's, all risk is on the applicant to go through that process. So there are some times where South Coast Air Quality Management District crunches their own numbers. They look at cumulative analysis and then they render a decision. So just as with, uh, ABC, there's a lot of risk for the applicant moving forward and accept that risk.
So just to clarify, even though this is an approved project and where they, they place it, ultimately if the air quality district decides that, hey, it's, it's not going to work, then there's no, they won't approve a gas station if the numbers don't pan out.
No, we spoke to their staff and that's exactly their role. They're there to evaluate a project after they get their local, um, permitting. Um, that's the proper step in time for them, but they weigh heavily on those projects.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course. Commissioner Harlan, question?
And this is maybe for Aaron and Jared. Regarding the twenty-four hour requests, has the police department weighed in on that?
Uh, we do have John Dernan, Sergeant Dernan in attendance. We can ask if he can come up.
And your question in regards to, what questions specifically do you have regarding, uh, changing it to twenty-four hours?
Correct. We saw some different statistics shared by the public. And I know there's some initial hours that were discussed and there's an ask here for twenty-four hours. Is the police department having an opinion?
Yes, sir. When you do open a facility twenty-four hours, you're going to have more problems. Uh, between those hours of ten PM to, I believe it was five AM. There's going to be more problems. There is going to be a, a higher crime rate, so to speak. And he was correct when you, you're talking about gas stations and, and, um, violent crimes. Things of that nature do go on at those twenty-four hour gas stations.
Is there a specific time that those crimes go on between midnight and three AM or one AM and two AM or, you know, something like that?
They really, they really do range. Um, my experience would be eleven, ten, ten till eleven, somewhere in there.
Ten PM to eleven PM?
Correct. No, ten PM, yes, correct. Ten to eleven PM, somewhere in that, that timeframe. And then all the way up till four or five in the morning.
Okay.
It's a wide range, but that's when the, that's when those violent crimes would happen, would be generally during those hours.
Okay. Thank you for your professional opinion on that. Um, Vice Chair or Commissioner Wojciech, any questions for staff to follow up or the applicant? No. Anybody else? No? Well, I mean, we've, uh, excuse me, actually, we need to close public testimony. So with that, let's, uh, does the applicant have any other rebuttals? I'm sorry, let me give you one last chance before we close public testimony.
As far as I know, in this city, there are no convenience stores that have limited hours. Every convenience store that has been approved, including, correct me if I'm wrong, the Beyond Food Mart, which is on Ald Road and is adjacent to residential u- uses, is twenty-four hours.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, well with that, let's, uh, close the public testimony at, at eight twenty-one PM. And we will now discuss, deliberate and make a decision. If there's a general consensus feeling.
I, I have a question for, um, Mr. City Attorney. Um, in the recommended action in number two, we have the substantial conformance combined with the minor conditional use permit for the alcohol use. In my recollection from the previous meetings, I think they were separated out because I, I have some concerns based on some of the, based on some of the public testimony that I heard.
Where are you, what are you reading?
I, I'm reading from the agenda.
The, I'm looking at the, the staff report, the recommended action, number two.
Yes, I'm looking from the agenda sheet that, um, picked up out front there. And it has, on recommended action, it has the adopt a resolution uh, to approve the substantial conformance and then, and remand a minor conditional use permit for the type ABC twenty license staff for processing. So as opposed to having two separate items, they're combined.
Yeah, I have staff address that because that's not the recommended action in the staff report.
Is it possible to put that on the screen?
Apologize, uh, Commissioner Vreman. So because the planning commission denied the M C U P, it cannot be remanded. It's dead. It, it has no value. It's gone. You can't resurrect a permit like that. So it's not a remandment. I apologize that verbiage is in there. It's a clean slate. It would be whether or not the planning commission felt that the applicant could submit a new application as part of the follow-up of the substantial conformance permit that you're looking at tonight.
If you look at the staff report, recommendation at the top of the page, I think it has the appropriate language in it. It does not include that verbiage that you were just reciting.
Okay, because I, what I wanted to make sure is, is, um, if there's a vote on number two, it doesn't automatically approve alcohol sales. I, I, I'd like to have some further discussion on, on, on that or, or make a motion at some point in time to.
Yes, Commissioner, no action tonight would approve an alcohol use because the applicant has not submitted a new application to make that request. We've only presented to you a revised plot plan layout, moving the convenience door and pumps, a change, a request to change the hours of operation and to be conditioned to pursue an M C U P. So apologize for the, uh, errant way that that was delivered.
And we've confirmed that the resolution doesn't contain that language either. It's just an error on the agenda. An extra part that's not being considered.
Okay, so if we approve it, it doesn't, it allows them to, to refile. Uh, but the prior action from the prior commissioner, commission was no, they did not want any alcohol sales. So it, does that open that possibility to now allow alcohol sales?
No action you take tonight changes their ability to refile or not. They still, they, whether you take action to approve or deny, they can always resubmit a new application for a new minor conditional use permit for alcohol sales. The only thing that's affected tonight is whether or not you approve this alternative plot plan.
Got it.
And the change, the proposed change to the conditions of approval that would extend the hours. These are the only two issues that are really on the table tonight.
Got it. Understood. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, um, Commissioner Wojciech, any other comments?
Yeah, um, I'd like to thank everyone for, um, first, the presentation, uh, from the applicant. Uh, and then the testimony from the residents that are primarily going to be affected by this. And, and that would include the emails that I've received over the last couple of days as well. Um, hearing the, the testimony from the affected residents this evening, I mean, it's, it's apparent, I mean, it's unequivocal. Everybody says, we don't want the gas station. We don't want the gas station. Um, I get it. If I lived there, I wouldn't want one either, to be honest. Right? Um, I don't want to be that close to a gas station. Okay, for a variety of reasons. Um, and there's a lot of other pleadings I don't want to be close to, yeah, as well. Um, probably a convenience store would probably be on my list, to be honest. Um, however, when we came here this evening, we were provided two options. Okay, when we're bound by, by what we came here for. Those options were to either approve the, leave in effect the existing plan, smaller footprint closer to you guys, or grow the footprint, push it away from you guys. Those are the two options. There's not another option. Legally, we can't proceed with another option. Those are the two options. And so understanding where you guys are coming from, I'm, I'm, I have to play with the cards I'm dealt with. And those are the cards I'm dealt with. And so then I look at, okay, what have they requested? What's the applicant requesting here? Bigger footprint? Okay, well, you know, they don't have a car wash anymore. There's some revenue there. No propane sales, lose some revenue there. You know, should they probably have a bigger footprint so they can make more retail sales? Yeah, I think that, that's probably a fair ask. I don't think that impacts the neighborhood that, that much, just by having a bigger convenience store footprint. You know, expansion of hours, that's a little bit of a head scratcher for me. Reason being is I look at the development code. And as I go through it, it talks about substantial conformance and minor modifications. And I could read that a couple of ways. I could read a minor modification that said, that says there's two hundred conditions we're asking for and all we're asking for is to change one of them. Is that minor? Well, two hundred conditions, one ask? It could be minor. But then again, can I look at each individual request they're making and ask myself, is that particular request minor or not? And I would think going from five AM to ten PM to twenty-four hours, I don't see that as minor. To be honest, I see that as a significant change. Um, and knowing that that's in my backyard, um, it's probably more major for some people than others. Um, and so I, I think what, ultimately what I would propose is I, I appreciate what the applicant's doing, pushing everything further away from the resident, uh, residents. Um, that's what we're, we're forced to look at tonight. I fully support that. I think there does have to be some modifications that have been discussed this evening with respect to that west, uh, exit. Um, I thought there was a really good point about, uh, EV chargers and the headlights. And I wouldn't want to be staring at headlights myself from my house. Um, and so I think there has to be some kind of barrier put over on that west end to help mitigate that. I don't know if a wall is the answer because I'm not sure I'd be wanting, wanting to stare at a wall outside my, my window either. Um, it may be, um, trees or bushes or hedges or something that would help mitigate that. So I would ask, uh, as part of tonight, that staff would look into that. Um, if we were to prove it, it'd be subject to some kind of modification, some kind of look on that west end to help soften that effect, that impact. And I certainly would not support the expansion to the twenty-four hours. That's why I have.
Okay. Uh, Vice Chair Fisher, any last comments? No? And I'd like to thank everyone as well, you know, starting with the applicant for revising this plan, um, making what I feel is a, an, a big improvement. And your willingness to, um, build some type of wall, some type of shelter on the west end. Um, we heard from a couple of residents that would certainly appreciate that, um, for different reasons. So I think that that would be great to be right into the conditions tonight. Um, along with, um, the daylight hours of operation for delivery and such. Um, and to the residents, you know, uh, we appreciate you guys, you know, you've, you've come here four times now in front of us. Um, organized and prepared, better every time. And the presentation and the slideshow, it was, uh, uh, the PowerPoint, I should say, was, um, you know, good. It was just really good. It was really moving and I understand where you guys are coming from. Unfortunately, you know, our, we're, we're very limited up here as planning commissioners, you know, this, this, it, it is not our decision on what gets to be built on land that's already zoned. It's not our land. It's not our decision on who buys the land and what that owner builds on the land. It's their decision, you know. This, that's, that is free enterprise. Um, we're so, we're so late and so deep into this that, you know, it's just beyond us and I sympathize for you guys. I, I agree that I would not want a gas station in my backyard either. Um, and, um, it's, 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 it's a tough pill for us to swallow, but, you know, we are limited to what we can do up here and, and that is just to approve, um, you know, the, the options that Commissioner Wojciech pointed out earlier. Um, all we can do is, is ask the applicant to give you guys as much as we can and, and that's a little bit more shelter with more landscape and a, a wall and, you know, uh, less visibility from the canopy, which they did. Uh, gas pumps that are further away. You know, a, a building that, um, blocks more of the view and, and, um, not a propane distribution facility. Not a loud or obnoxious or ugly or whatever you want to call it. Um, uh, car wash that we have, you know, so many of in Marietta already. You know, those kind of things are within our power to ask and the applicant has, you know, been very gracious to give some of those things. Now, I, I, I use that, you know, that term very, um, um, you know, with sensitivity because I, 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 I understand and I feel, I feel for you guys, but we do have a decision to make and, and with all that being said, um, thank you all for participating in all these and, you know, I'm sure it'll continue, but um, we do need to have a motion. So I will call upon my commissioners to make a motion and to consider the uh, extra conditions that we spoke about tonight to be considered with that.
Well, I'll, I'll move, um, to, uh, adopt the recommendation for the redesign. Subject to delivery hours during the, I guess, the normal business hours and staff to work with.
Daylight hours?
Daylight hours. The staff to work with, uh, the applicant regarding some, some kind of barrier on that west end. That would be appropriate for the, the use of the west end. And, but I would not approve the, um, the extended hours to twenty-four hours. That'd be my motion.
Do you want, do you need to read this?
Uh, I, I don't know if staff is already working on condition language down there to speak to this or if we should make a suggestion up here.
This would be on the wall, the buffering screening agent.
The wall and restriction of deliveries, uh, to during daylight hours.
Yeah, condition of approval can read that the applicant shall restrict all deliveries during daylight hours only. No delivery shall occur outside of daylight hours because from winter to summer, those hours change. But we want to be careful that dusk to dawn is very succinct. The second one we can read into the record is that applicant will work with staff to provide an adequate buffering and screening agent to serve uh, on the common property line. That could result in a combination of a wall with landscaping, but we want to keep that up in the air. I do want to check with the planning commission. Do you want us to take feedback from the neighbors because there are specific homeowners that live in the specific west area that I think it would matter to them as to what attribute was in their visual element. So I, I think if you, if you want to expand that, uh, commissioner, I, I think that would help staff. Make, make sure that we had the most valuable input to what that design might be, just not knowing today what we would end up to. So you could revise that to say that applicant will work with staff to provide, to develop a necessary buffering screening agent with the input of the, of the, uh, adjacent neighbors. I think something like that might be salient.
I would revise it to reflect what you just indicated. It's part of my motion.
Yeah.
Just, just one comment on the, uh, the ask for twenty-four hours?
Well, we are in the middle of the motion. Did you?
This motion was to deny that request so the original hours would remain.
Sorry about that. Sorry about that.
Unless, you could make an alternate motion, of course, but.
So, so, so is, is the motion, has the motion been made clear enough?
Yes, I have a motion to adopt, uh, the resolution of the planning commission as recommended with a modification to the conditions of approval to work with staff to create this additional screening element and to, uh, consult with nearby property owners to reduce potential impacts from light and noise, and to restrict delivery to, uh, daylight hours only, dusk to dawn, uh, with no change to the currently adopted operating hours.
Okay, clear. Uh, motion made by Commissioner Wojcik, and I'd like to call for a second.
Well, second.
Second made by Commissioner Vreman. Thank you. Madam Secretary, can we please do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Vreman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wojcik.
Aye.
Commissioner Harlan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Fisher.
Vice Chair Fisher.
Thank you. If I can pause while the commissioners, uh, deliberating right now, uh, we do want to make sure that, uh, the motion included recommendation number one to adopt the notice of exemption if someone disequa. I want to clarify that that was part of your motion, Commissioner Wojcik. You can verify that?
Yes, it, it would include adopting recommendation number one. I apologize, I skipped right to number two.
And Mr. Vreman, you still second that?
Yes.
And if you could retake the roll call, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Vreman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wojcik.
Aye.
Commissioner Harlan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Fisher.
Aye.
Chair La Paglia.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. City Planner, any comments tonight?
So, uh, the, the planning commission has rendered a decision this evening on the project, and that does open up a ten-day appeal period. If the public's wishing to appeal the project, they can contact myself, the planning staff, or come to our front counter, uh, for documentation. And I would just comment, um, looking forward to the Planning Commissioners, uh, Academy next week. And, uh, we also anticipate having, uh, the multi-family design guidelines come back to the commission next month, uh, for consideration in a workshop. So looking forward to that as well with the commission.
Good.
And back to you, Chair.
Thank you, newly appointed city planner. Um, City Attorney, any comment?
Thank you. I just want to expand on that one tiny bit, uh, that, that the, uh, the project isn't necessarily appealable to the city council, but the city, uh, the planning commission's decision tonight is appealable. So not the project in its entirety, but the decision of the planning commission here tonight is, is the appeal that's.
Okay, is appealable to city, city council. Okay. All right. Well, with that, uh, we will conclude tonight's, um, meeting at, uh, eight thirty-eight PM. Thank you all. Have a good night.